Oh, this must be important. Look who's come here. Oh, this must be.
That's right.
I'm having a...
Nope, no, I just got back from a trip with things to do, so, you know, I'm here the whole time. Yeah, we'll find out. We have to know on Monday, because we have seven days. We'll find out. We'll get there, we'll get there today, that's about it. So, soon as Diana learns, as we're scheduled to do, when she learns that, like she learned today, there was going to be on television, Saturday, it was on, it was twelve, I don't know. If they did their convention Saturday, which is very tricky. Uh... Do you see this, do you see this now? Yeah, if they did it on the... If they did it on the tent, or the south side, that would tell them. If we find out today, tomorrow, Wednesday, we... Yeah, so, I've been, every other year, I've been going, uh, Jennifer and Eric go to their spouse's family the same year, so that the next Thanksgiving. Right, right, right. So, if this was Thanksgiving without them, and Christmas with them, next year, it's, uh, that's great, right? Yeah, it is. We finally figured it out. And that way, we know right now that next Christmas, we're going to be traveling to the... That's great. Yeah, true. But maybe it's a happy time, all of the people, everybody's house, you know? We finally decided we could only do it once a year. You couldn't really do it twice a year. What are you going to call it? A bar? Can you do it? Do it. Do you have a cellphone number? We're not breaking. It's a break. That's where it breaks off. Run out the door.
of this Tuesday, November twenty-ninth. We have several, actually, five public works items, and, um, so we'll get started on them. So, item fourteen A is the first reading and setting the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number PA one-three-three-four in the matter of co-adopting amendments to the Florence revitalization, twenty-twenty comprehensive plan coastal goals and Lane County zoning maps as applicable within the urban growth boundary outside Florence city limits and adopting savings and severability clauses. The file number is five oh nine dash PA one-six dash zero-five-two-seven-six, Florence periodic review work task number six. So, welcome, Ms. McKinney, our land management manager.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of Lizzy Eichner, who is the project manager for this, and the other two ordinances that will be before you. Today is just a first reading, so, um, we're looking for approval of the first reading and sec- and setting of the public hearing next, in two weeks, on December thirteenth. One of the things that I would note, and this is, of course, true for all of these ordinances, because we'll be reviewing them concurrently, is that I know we have a busy afternoon already on September thirteenth, um, and so if it's necessary to continue that hearing, depending on the nature of the testimony or of the discussion prior to that, because we'll have Hazel Dell that, that day as well, um, we would be able to, and we've talked to staff about either maybe coming back on Wednesday, um, or just pushing it out to, um, the next available board meeting. So, I wanted to let you know you have that option.
Okay. All right.
But we still should set the second reading for the December thirteenth, so that we have them in the books.
Okay, do, did we set a time certain for the Hazel Dell conversation? It's just deliberation?
It's not a time certain, right? Just deliberation.
However, the agenda team sets it. Okay. All right, do we have any questions of staff on the first reading? Didn't we already do this? No. Seems like it. Uh, so I'd entertain a motion moving the first reading and setting the second reading for ordinance number PA thirteen thirty-four for December thirteenth, one-thirty, Harrisaw. So, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Uh, so the next item is the first reading and setting the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number sixteen dash eleven. It's in the matter of adopting amendments to, uh, chapter ten of Lane Code and adopting savings and severability clauses. It's file number five oh nine PA one-six dash zero-five-two-seven-six.
And again, this is, um, all four ordinances are related to the Florence comprehensive plan amendment, so today we're looking for, um, approval of the first reading and second, setting of the second reading on the thirteenth.
Okay. Diana, we, we got Pat on. You still there, Pat?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Away text. Sorry about that. I love technology, and it's getting better. It's definitely getting better. We still have glitches. Okay, so, so with that, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Bozovich?
No, I was just going to move the first reading and setting the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number sixteen dash eleven in the matter of adopting amendments to chapter ten of the Lane Code and adopting savings and severability clauses for December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen at one-thirty.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Is there further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, just second. No opposed, passes unanimous. Commissioner Farr.
Sorry, I pushed that. I can, uh, I can predict what you're going to say about seven seconds before you say it on TV.
Really? That's good.
That's the leg.
All right. So, the next one is the first reading and setting the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number PA one-three-three-five in the matter of co-adopting amendments to the Florence revitalization twenty-twenty comprehensive plan, parks and recreation policies, and the Florence comprehensive plan map and adopting savings and severability clauses. File number five zero nine dash PA one-six dash zero-five-two-seven-seven. So, again, questions for staff? Okay. entertain a motion?
So, I'll move approval of the first reading and setting the second reading, uh, and public hearing for ordinance number PA thirteen thirty-five for December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen at one-thirty.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimous. In the next one, the final first reading, is the first reading and setting the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number PA one-three-three-six in the matter of co-adopting amendments to the Florence revitalization twenty-twenty comprehensive plan and Florence stormwater management plan, various housekeeping amendments and adopting savings and severability clauses. The file number is five zero nine dash PA one-six dash zero-five-two-seven-six. Okay. Commissioner Bozovich?
So, I'll move approval of the first reading and setting the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number PA thirteen thirty-six for December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen at one-thirty.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimous. All right, thank you. So, now we'll move to public works item B, which is the discussion on appeal trends in the land management division, and, once again, Ms. McKinney.
Thank you very much, Chair, Commissioners. We also have with us Kier Miller, our planning supervisor this afternoon, um, and we're, um, glad to have this discussion. I wanted to start by saying we've received, and you received, some testimony directly, um, written testimony yesterday, um, five pieces, and then we also had some people speak at the public testimony this morning and provide oral testimony. Um, I want to say I really appreciate those people for, um, contributing those comments and being part of the discussion, and I'd also like to note, as, um, Bob Emmons noted from Land Watch Lane County, we really have worked hard over the past year to, um, develop a relationship so that we're working with that organization, certainly with other people who are, um, interested stakeholders, um, and really appreciate his time, the time that Lori Siegel takes to, um, both meet with us and do really thorough analysis of the, um, decisions that we go through, and so we look forward to continuing that positive working relationship with Land Watch, and ultimately, our preference, I think, like, like they, would be to work out these issues before we get into the litigation, um, and in some cases, we're able to do that, in other ones, there's just disagreements about the legality of it, so that, um, that's why we have the, um, appeals process.
So, question for you. Were you able to receive Paul Conti's?
Yes.
I'm sure.
Received that as well. Thank you. Um, and I also just wanted to clarify, just for the record, that staff are here really today responding to the board's request for additional information, which came about in a couple of ways. Um, one was, um, Bill Close did submit some, um, oral and written testimony to the board specifically around this, um, fee, the fee of the request not to hear. Um, at the same time, um, or within that same timeframe, the board had actually heard five or six or seven elect-not-to-hear packages, which was a significant spike from years past, so again, I think that's why this has risen to the forefront. Um, another thing I wanted to note about the, um, the history with the appeals, while we did note, and I certainly want to give credit to the fact that there have been cases, um, where Land Watch or an appellant has illustrated something that has, um, uh, directed us to change our policy essentially, um, there was some testimony, uh, indicating that we had a very low success rate, and, um, if you look over the past several years, that really is not the case, um, and if you look over a ten- or twelve-year period, um, Lane County is often affirmed. It's difficult to get the exact numbers, because it's not a, yes, you win, no, you lose, often from Luba, the kinds of decisions that we get as we get remands, um, sometimes those are of substantive issues, sometimes it's a procedural issue, sometimes it's just to provide additional findings, um, and then that, uh, decision is approved, so, um, again, there has been a lot of back and forth, but, um, it's not that Lan- Lane County has a, a really negative history with regards to the, um, decisions. They're, they're mixed. And then further, I wanted also to note, and I think people understand this, but what we're talking about here, it, with this, um, two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, is not the first appeal, so by statute, and certainly staff supports, I think the board supports, maintaining an original two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee that allows people to have an inexpensive way to participate in the Land Watch process. What we are talking about here is a specific process that was added in two thousand and nine, um, where the board made a decision to use a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee for a second appeal, so again, the first appeal either is from the planning director or the hearings official, um, and then that, um, can be taken to the board. If the applicant is asking for the board not to hear that, um, the change that the, uh, board made in two thousand and nine was to allow that to be a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee. If the appellant is requesting for the board to hear it, then the fee is much higher, and we provided some details in your memorandum, it's more like twenty, two thousand to two five hundred dollars.
So, may I ask a question? So, uh, sometimes it's dangerous to rely on your memory, so, um, I was here in two thousand and nine, that was a while ago. Um, one of the reasons that, the compelling reasons the board, I believe, insta-, you know, implemented this two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee was, is that the case was made that most of these have already gone through a, um, through a hearings official, and essentially all the board is doing is, in most cases, if it's elected not to hear, is to support the hearings official decision and move it on, and so there was a lot of discussion about, well, there's not a lot of, hypothetically, not a lot of staff time put into that, if it's just a, a cover memo and, and move it on. I noticed that in your, and we didn't have anything really to go by at that point right now.
Right.
Uh, back when we adopted it, now we have seven years, potentially seven years of history. I see in your, your staff memo that you're, you're stating that whether or not we elect to hear the appeal, it costs fifteen hundred dollars just to bring it to the board. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. It certainly is less, excuse me, less expensive if you do not hear it, because there's not a hearing associated with that, but the staff preparation, just in terms of preparing a memo, working with our partners downtown, in terms of getting it on the board, participating in that discussion, is, is a much higher cost than the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee. The other thing I'd note, and I think this is something worth discussing, um, this afternoon, is that in two thousand and nine, when the board agreed on that, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, the idea was that it would be a consent calendar item. Now, if it's a consent calendar item, that is significantly less staff time. We still would prepare, um, the materials, and as Ms. Siegel said in her testimony, often that can be cutting and pasting from previous, um, reports that either staff or the hearings official have done, but then we don't actually have to, unless the board pulls it, um, we don't really participate, so it's a, it was intended to be a much more streamlined, less staff-intensive, um, way to go, and, and again, when we looked at that in two thousand and nine, what staff was recommending was a six-hundred-dollar fee instead of the two-hundred-and-fifty that, um, that we arrived on, and I think that comes closer to covering that staff time, just again, for the preparation of the materials, but I think that's where the discrepancy is, and again, as you've noted, we didn't really have anything to go on in two thousand and nine. We did note, the staff memorandum noted that this would be something to look back on and to, and to revisit with the board, which is, I think, um, timely that we're doing that now. Um, the assumption was perhaps this would allow for an increase in appeals, um, and again, I don't, as a planning director and the division manager, I don't want the perception to be that we're looking to eliminate appeals or to slow down appeals or to somehow be obstruction, obstructioning, the obstructionist towards having that discussion, because again, it's an important part of the land use discussion, and I think it's, it's very valuable, but as the division manager and recognizing that we are a fee-supported division, I think it's worth having that conversation and having the board make a policy decision about whether they want to continue to support that, because the bottom line is, it does require a supplement of fees, because the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars doesn't cover it, or does the board want to look at being more fee-driven and have the fees, uh, raised to reflect that? Um, and again, I think another option for the board to consider is, would the board be willing to put these items on the consent calendar, make it an elect-not-to-hear, um, where it would be reviewed as part of your materials, and then you could just, um, as a consent item, prepare an order? We were discussing with legal counsel that we would still prepare the order in such a way that the board could adopt the findings, um, we could, um, still make the deference issue clear, um, but again, it would reduce the amount of staff time that is involved in that. I don't know, Kier, if you had any other comments, um, but I think those were the main points that we wanted to, to make this afternoon, and again, are really interested in what the board is interested in seeing and what kind of direction that she would have us move in.
Okay. Ms. Sorenson?
Uh, thank you very much. I noticed you included the letter of August twenty-three, uh, twenty sixteen from, uh, Mr. Close. He titled his letter, "It is time for the county to stop subsidized land use litigation by Land Watch Lane County." Now, as I understand it, in this, uh, litigation process, there's a filing fee, and then there's other costs. So, does Lane County subsidize the litigation of Land Watch?
We don't provide any funding for Land Watch to do litigation, no.
Okay, so, the, the title of the, of the letter that starts this whole thing off is, "It is time for the county to stop subsidizing land use litigation by Land Watch Lane County."
And I don't want to speak for, um, Mr. Close, but when I read this letter, my understanding this, the subsidizing that he's talking about is the fact that the fees, the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, does not cover the elect-not-to-hear, and so that's what he's, um, referring to as a subsidy.
And he's upset that he asked for every, uh, email from Land Watch Lane County to Lane County government, and he was quoted a fee of twenty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars to produce those emails, um, but he thinks that because Land Watch appeals to Lane County has received a ninety-five percent subsidy, he thinks the county should only charge him one thousand dollars for the Land Watch emails. Now, does that have anything to do with what we're talking about today? Whether he gets a subsidy or not for his emails he wants to get?
I, I would not say that's related to the appeal.
I don't think it's related at all, but there's an entire paragraph devoted to this topic. Now, other than this letter from Mr. Close, who represents the developers, have you had anybody complaining about this fee issue? Is there anybody that's upset about this besides Mr. Close and his clients?
I think we've received comments from other land use consultants. One of the, um, issues is that with the addition, addition in appeals, applications, it might take staff, um, they're not able to get to other applications as quickly, so I think that's where we've heard some feedback from our customers that are wondering why we can't process a land use compatibility statement more quickly and...
Is it fair to say that you got one letter and you put it in the packet, and you didn't put any other letters in the packet?
We did not, we have not received anything else in writing, Commissioner Sorenson.
Okay.
So, it's just that letter, and then again, as I noted, the board has discussed that as staff has come forward with different elect-not-to-hear, um, packets, and I will also note, um, I forgot to mention, it was an issue that the legislative committee discussed, um, and when Alex Kyler reported to the board, there was a conversation about whether the board wanted to look at this at more broadly as a, as a statewide issue, um, and the decision was, at that point, not to make it a legislative issue for this session, there was some discussion that perhaps the commissioners, um, would have with AOC. Um, I know that, uh, we did, Kier and I, reached out to the Association of Oregon County Planning Directors to see what, what the appeal trends were in other counties, and, um, we certainly are, um, our numbers are the highest, um, the only other county that came anywhere close was into Chutes County, um, and again, the other thing that I mentioned is what we did solicit, um, questions about what the fees were in those other counties, and again, they're much closer to what our elect-to-hear fees are, um, at about two thousand bucks.
And in those other counties, I mean, one of the reasons we have more cases is we have a, a group that's organized, a public interest group, that's organized to help people in the county try to navigate a very complex system. I'm not aware that that exists in those other counties, and the fact that they don't have enforcement in those other counties is because they don't have any groups out there doing the enforcement. We have that here with, with Land Watch Lane County.
And you're right, that's not, um, true across the board, there are other organizations, other Land Watch organizations, but, but you're right, not all counties have that.
Yeah, okay, and, and the other thing is, we don't have authority, as I understand it, to award, as Mr. Conti said in his, his, um, public comments, to award, uh, the attorney fees, which is a very substantial part of, of the cost of all this. We don't have authority to do that in cases where a citizen group has had to go and take on a government over their enforcement of the state's land use laws. We don't have that authority.
Uh, we defer to county council on that question.
I would think no, it's not an issue we've looked at in any depth, for sure.
Yeah, and even if we did have that authority, since, uh, the contentious nature of land use litigation, i.e., it's the public against the government, it's highly unlikely the government would use any authority, if it had it, to say, "Oh, thank you for suing us and bringing us into complaint." Usually, it's like a more contentious process than that, so, I don't know, I, I, I think that we ought to call it what it is. The land use, uh, consultants and the developers, they don't like the fact that there's a public interest group in this community that tries to protect Oregon's land use law, you know, maybe a majority of the commissioners don't like it either, but to put up more barriers to a system that's already difficult for the public to understand and to, um, protect public values, I, I think is just going in the wrong direction, and I think the fact that the legislature has capped the fees at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars is an indication that the legislature understands that this, these kinds of fees are, in fact, real barriers to people trying to understand and enforce these laws, so I, I just think we ought to drop it. I, I'm glad you included one option, which is to drop it, and that's what I think we ought to do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Bozovich?
Thank you. So, um, besides some testimony this morning that, um, challenged our personal knowledge of land use law, um, something I've worked in most of my life, so I kind of take a little bit of umbrage to some of the testimony this morning, um, looking at the numbers, the previous ten years before this year, if you took all those applications we approved and, you know, divided them into the total number of appeals over those ten years, one point six-six percent. We had one year that had a low of point seven percent, we have one year that had a high of two-point-three percent appeal rate of our decisions, and mind you, there were years in there where we were approving two thousand applications in a year. This year, we approved a little less than a thousand. Our appeals rate is four and a half percent, almost three times what the ten-year average is, and it's not because we got multiple permits coming in or some amazing growth of permits, it's far less than we were before two thousand, the crash in two thousand and eight, when we were doing two thousand applications a year, so, it's not about a whole bunch of them coming in, it's not about more complex ones coming in, it's about somebody making an effort to utilize the appeal system, uh, as a roadblock, I, I feel, and, you know, the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar initial appeal fee is about access, and we're talking about the second step in the process here, and something that we are currently subsidizing with other permit fees and other, um, revenues, like, uh, like our, our fee that we've attached to tipping fees, uh, because we're not collecting the actual cost of this appeal. So, yes, there is a subsidy. No, it's not subsidizing legal cost or attorneys, but it's subsidizing our staff cost to, to prepare this, this secondary appeal, even if it is to go directly, you know, up to Luba and elect-not-to-hear. this secondary appeal, even if it is to go directly up to Luba and elect-not-to-hear. But anytime you ask for a decision in the board, the information to make that decision has to be collected and presented, and some staff has got to do that. And as a board, even if it's a request of an elect-not-to-hear, we still have to make a decision. Is it elect, do we move it up and we confirm the decision? And do we just move it up with neutral? Or do we decide to remand or elect-to-hear? You know, we have a bunch of choices we have to make as a board, even if the request is just elect-not-to-hear. So I think there needs to be some change in the system, because it's obviously, there's a sudden spike. And it's not about there's a sudden spike of applications, because we're far below the 2006, 2007, 2008 numbers, when we were getting one to two Land Watch appeals. And yes, I know, Lydia, it's really difficult to track our success rate, because sometimes Luba will remand something for a pure technicality. We rewrite a finding, send it back, and they approve it, but it looks like we got remanded. And Commissioner Sorenson, the property owner is the public also. The applicant is our public, not just the public out there that's opposing the application. So when you start talking about the public against the government, we're the middle of our public. There's a public on the applicant's side, and there's a public on the opposition's side. And we're trying to interpret state law accurately and issue good decisions based on state law. And I think we need to look at somehow or another a system that either discontinues this current peak that's causing us to get behind in other applications, sinking large cost into this, or we need to look at, you know, some other way of processing elect-to-hears where they're less costly. So my question out of all this is, and I asked this last time, is it legal for us to adopt a fee structure that allows us to refund a portion of the fee if the appellant, now whether it's the applicant or some other party, if the appellant is upheld at Luba?
Yeah, we can do that. We need to make a change to the Ordinance of Lain Code amendment, but yeah.
Because I think, you know, I agree, I don't want to make this, you know, if there is an appeal that is successful at Luba, even if it's something as simple as a technical remand, which, you know, I'm not going to try and split hairs about that, but if it is overturned and brought back from Luba, then I think we need to refund all but the $250. But I think people need to start paying the full cost of that elect-not-to-hear cost, because I think we're seeing some of these come in purely as a way of extending the timeline on an application that will ultimately be upheld, trying to see if they can use time to get their way versus actual legal arguments. So I would support us going to a place where we change the elect-to-hear fees to be the actual, reflect close to actual cost, with a provision that we refund all but $250 if Luba upholds whoever made the request to elect-not-to-hear and move on to Luba, whoever made the appeal request, whether that's the applicant or some other third party.
A question for you, if possible. I want to try to separate this and make it not a personal component, which it appears to, some of the comments are directed at certain entities. I, for one, appreciate Land Watch, because I'm able to give folks that have concerns with goings-on in the area their phone number to contact and discuss whether or not an application is appropriate or not. So I believe they have an important role, and I'm glad I have somebody to refer them to. That being said, I know I've been on this board, and there's been applicants that haven't received the decision that they wanted, and they've appealed it. Do you have an idea of, you know, a number of applicants versus, you know, neighbors that have done appeals?
Well, in one of the attachments we did provide, Kier, do you have that? You want to speak to that?
Well, I don't know that we actually have the numbers in the attachment that speaks to the applicant appeal. We do have it broken out. I know you said you didn't want to discuss, you know, specifics, organizations, but we did, because the numbers are so highly sort of off balance. We did provide in your attachment some numbers that show the amount of appeals by Land Watch Lain County compared to appeals by other, it could be neighbors, applicants, et cetera. And, for example, in the first half of 2016, we see that 70% of appeals come from Land Watch, whereas 30% come from other entities.
So we actually did sync some of that up. Okay, well, again, I kind of want to circle myself back to the question here and the piece that you've mentioned as a manager of this department, where a fee-based department collects fees for service. This is a service, and as you pointed out, you know, the recommendation back in 2009 was $600, and a process that used the consent calendar, which we're not doing at this point, and we certainly aren't charging the $600 fee. It looks like what's being recommended, or what the actual costs were, more like around $1,200, is that right?
Well, if you look at the.
Oh, $1,500, $1,500, that probably includes a $250 component, right? So if we kept our process the same, and they all come before the board, and we have, you know, agenda time and staff time before the board, then you're saying that we're not collecting on these appeals about $1,200 or so, that
That's right.
Isn't necessary to cover the cost? Do you have an idea what the cost would be if we were to use the consent calendar? I mean, in regards to, is it still the $1,500, or?
No, I think it would be significantly less, and I think, again, that's where we came up with the $600 fee in 2009, was assuming it would be a consent calendar item. So we can put a little bit finer pencil on that and look at some recent numbers for consent items and get you a more specific number. But again, I think that's why we came up with the $600 fee back in 2009, is assuming that would be a cost recovery, closer to cost recovery for consent.
Yeah. And I am intrigued by the component that if you're successful in your appeal, that you would recover, you know, most of your money back. I mean, that says that we didn't implement the law, according to the
Right.
way the judge, the governing body that oversees that believes. So, you know, I think that that could be a conversation that we would have, too, that I would support having. So I'd be interested in understanding what the fee might look like if we did the consent calendar, to see if we can get it more representative, because essentially, I think, since we've went through this process, the majority of the, you know, whether it's the appellant or the applicant, want to see it move forward. This board just goes through the motions and makes it happen. So if we could reduce that cost, which was the intent of this process to start with, and not penalize people, and to get it to a final decision quicker, that was the intent of the process. It wasn't to supplement somebody or to, you know, to cause some sort of a logjam. Unfortunately, I think you shared with me, it wasn't too long ago, that you've seen more plan amendment applications this year than we have in years.
Ever.
I mean, I think you said 10 or 11?
We have 10 active, 10 or 11 active, and five that are in the pipeline that we've been informed will be receiving.
So, I mean, we've just seen an increase in activity, and these things are, I mean, as we will be dealing with in a couple of weeks with Hazel Dell Corey piece, I mean, it just, there's a lot involved in them, and they just take time. And I think it's important that we, folks understand that our time, you know, we don't have a reserve that we can dip into to pay for cost overruns and that, that we need to do the best we can to pay for the cost of service, so. Other comments? Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lydia, as you and your team, as you were working through this process, I mean, I will say, I think that the area I'm most troubled about is the letter from Mr. Close, and I would agree with Commissioner Sorenson. The way it's titled, it almost looks like that as you're going through the process, I hope that this wasn't a process about Lain Land Watch. What was the process? I mean, is you're developing the fees? Because I got to tell you, I think that I am somewhat offended by that as well, when we get a letter and it's time for the county to stop subsidizing land use litigation by Land Watch Lain County. I believe in full cost recovery. I think that's the key, and that's the important piece here, and I hope that's what we focus in on. But unfortunately, I think they sustain it a little bit, and because of what that looks like, that in a sense, we're using Land Watch as, this is the reason why we're doing this. Well, it shouldn't be the reason why we're doing this. But the reason why we're doing this should be the fact that if there's a process involved, it's no different than what we did. And when I was mayor, we would go, we'd look at, how do we recover our costs? Because development services, same things, fee-driven, and it's not part of the general fund. And so there's ways to recover the cost. We added an expedited fee, so no matter how large it was, people thought it was just set aside for companies like Roque, Ribbon, Cruise Line, and others, set aside for anybody. You wanted to pay a larger fee, you go to the front of the line. It got to the point, that became a problem, because everybody wanted to go to the front of the line. It was amazing on how many people were willing to pay that fee. Time is money. So that's the question I'm asking. So when you're looking at, this is about cost recovery? We're not singling out Land Watch, are we?
Absolutely not. I mean, and that really isn't staff's intent. Again, we're responding to the request for information, and as Kier said, we only pulled out the numbers of Land Watch, because it was such a significant amount in the past few years. But this really is about, and again, as a division manager, the way that I'm looking at it is, it's not a judgment call. It's really about, you know, what's the right thing to do in terms of how we do cost recovery in the division, or, as I said, you know, before, do we want to make a deliberate decision that, and maybe that's a good idea, to support Goal One, to support the process that we would continue to subsidize that. But I think that's really the question that we want to have out in the open and transparently. So, yeah, I would put those other things aside, and that's really what, from a staff standpoint, what we're focusing on.
And Mr. Close is a personal friend. It doesn't mean I have not locked horns with him in the past. Believe me, during my career in office, I have locked horns with him many, many, many times, as he's represented a client. So from that perspective, I mean, he's entitled, obviously, to write it, but I would agree. I think the title, unfortunately, of this letter is, I do find that offensive. And I just wanted to clarify that this should be about cost recovery, and we shouldn't be worrying about what an organization is doing or not doing. The other question I have is that when we heard from Mr. Emmons this morning, he gave you significant compliments, I must say. I was pretty impressed. And my question to you is, do you feel like there is a good back and forth with Mr. Emmons and with Land Watch and what's occurring now? Because it's obvious to me, he feels like there's a good relationship that is building, and I think trust, that maybe they have felt like that that hasn't been the case. Again, I've only been on this board for not quite six years, so I don't have all of that history that maybe other folks here do. So your thoughts on just on his testimony this morning?
Well, I absolutely do agree. And again, we have made a concerted effort to reach out to Land Watch, and they have made a concerted effort to reach out to us as well. It really has been a two-way street. So the first part was opening up the communications, because I think you're right, at least what I heard is that they felt like they didn't have access to staff and to have those conversations with the division the way that other people maybe might. And so we wanted to just set out very clearly that that's not how we wanted to work, that we wanted to build those relationships. And I think, you know, again, despite the fact that we're having a little bit of a challenge here with the appeals, I don't feel like, you know, Land Watch is making this personal, certainly isn't personal for me. And again, what I would want us to focus on, to the extent that we can be successful, is to, again, keep these discussions, to the extent that we can, out of, you know, the board office and out of the legal realm, and to be able to work those things out. And I think, again, it will take some time, because the other thing that, and again, this is where I gave them kudos, is that decisions that have happened in the past, policies that have been implemented in the past, those, in some ways, I don't see those until they're surfaced in an appeal. And there have been some things that Land Watch has brought to light that we've said, yes, we agree with them, and so we do change our policies. So again, we do look forward to continuing that relationship. And I really do want to give Land Watch, especially Bob and Lori, credit for taking the time, because they have been very diligent about making the time for us and coming into town to have those meetings.
And the other thing I'll just add is, you know, my family's been in the residential development business for many years. We don't do much anymore, but have been in this state for a long time. And so anytime we would do a project, we would build in that timeframe for the appeal process, because you had to expect it, and because that's just part of doing business in Oregon. I will say, we, as we found, as I found out, because we own some property in Illinois, wow. Permits, we got in a week, and there is an appeal process, so conversation over with. It was pretty amazing. Land use in southern Illinois and Oregon is like Mars and Venus. I mean, it's just, it is just not even on the same page. It was pretty, boy, did I get awakening. I thought, you had this expectation about, boy, what's going to happen now? Oh, that's it? Great, move on. So anyway, all right. I just want to make sure we're focused on really what it is we're looking at, and that's from the fee standpoint, and making sure that there's a cost recovery involved with making sure staff, the time that you're putting into this, that, because with your division being fee-driven, and basically, that's how you're budgeted, I think that that's the important piece to be focusing on, and not focusing on an outside organization. So, thank you.
Commissioner Farr, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
No, I've been listening very, very closely. Each of the other commissioners have made some good points. I was looking very closely at what Commissioner Sorenson had to say. I believe that Commissioner Bozovic pointed out that both parties in an appeal are the public, are the paying public, and that we are the ones in the middle. So as long as, as Commissioner Lichen says, we're moving forward, looking at the fees and the cost recovery, that is the important element here, is not putting the brakes on any one organization or taking any other organization a smooth ride.
Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you. And I'll just, I'm kind of glad Sid brought up the subject of not making this about one organization, because I have, Justice Commissioner Stewart has, I've referred people to Land Watch, you know, that were having issues with, you know, certain forest products company doing a lot of lotline adjustments, then trying to develop land that had, through not completely legal access. And I've worked with different members of Land Watch on various particular issues, and particularly, an issue out in the Five Rivers area with Mona. And like Commissioner Lichen, I've, you know, we've crossed horns with Bill Close before, and unlike some things that we get accused of, of being, you know, tools of various donors and stuff like that, I like to remind people that one of the cases that actually came before the board and we made a decision on in an appeal to the commissioners, was the Delta Sand and gravel attempt to go back and use historical documents of the Metro Plan that weren't part of the final Metro Plan, but they were part of the drafts of the Metro Plan to prove that they could actually expand their gravel operations. Bill Close was the attorney representing them, and we completely rejected that argument and their application, even though Delta had, you know, contributed to most of the commissioners' campaigns up here. And the fact that supposedly Bill Close is, you know, in with us and all that stuff, it, sometimes, you know, we all like to rule on the merits, and in fact, you know, I think it was just, you know, was it last couple of weeks ago that Commissioner Sorenson and I were on the same side of a vote on a split decision over land use, which I believe the client was represented by Mr. Close's office. So it's not about who's involved here, but some of the testimony this morning kind of got into the personal and stuff, and also got, tried to misrepresent the trends, and that's what this item was really about, is what are the trends? And the trends are that we're seeing a significant spike in appeals, which, you know, when we're talking about a 1% appeals rate, you know, we're talking about a 1% appeals rate, you know, having a certain amount of subsidy might not be that bad of a thing. When it starts driving past 4%, and we're looking at dumping $1,200 for each appeal in staff time, we got to fix that. So whatever we can do, whether it's a shortened process, or whether it's a, you know, if successful return of partial, partial return of fee, or, you know, the $600 fee in a shortened process, because quite often, it is the applicant that's making the appeal to. In fact, that's probably, you know, historically, it's been half of the appeals has been the applicant. Recently, it hasn't been. In this, in 2016, in these first, you know, first 10 months of 2016, it hasn't been. So for me, it's, yeah, we just need to get the cost recovery somehow, and then make this a little bit fair, knowing that this is not the first appeal. This is the second step of the appeal process. But if we can make it a simple process where we can charge less, that benefits everybody, both applicants and third-party appellants.
So I have a question for you. It sounds to me, do we have to do any changes in the process if we actually did a consent calendar?
What I would recommend that we do is, you would let us come back and just flesh that out. I think we can do it with, we can just change the fee schedule. But our legal counsel thinks that there may be some code changes that would be involved in that. So we could come back in a relatively short time and just give you some details, unless you're prepared to ask that, answer that now.
No, I think that's best. Whether you want to come back with a draft of something, or probably a work session would be best. I guess one thing I would caution the board on is, my perspective of a consent calendar item is a routine matter that the board deals with frequently. But significantly for here, there are matters that the board reads, thinks about, reflects on, and decides to go with the order or not. The way we have drawn up orders on appeals in these land use matters, even the elect-not-to-hear matters, typically will say that the board has reviewed and agrees with the decision of the hearings official. That language is put in there so that there is some amount of deference when Luba reviews these things on appeal, deference of county's decision on matters of county policy. In other words, if you're just interpreting state law, Luba doesn't care what you think, honestly. It's just, what's the law hold? If you're interpreting county policy, then your decision, because you're interpreting the code that you enacted, has some weight. The hearings official decision doesn't have that sort of deference, because the hearings official did not enact the policy being interpreted. In order for that same deference language to have any weight when you are doing it as a consent calendar item, you have to do your normal job, normal process. And I guess my caution would be, to the extent that the board shouldn't see that as simply a rubber stamp, we're just going to move this on to an appeal. We don't need to do anything more with it. I think when you're looking at it as a consent calendar item, there's still work for the board to do. There's less work for staff, but the same amount, I think, for the commissioners, because you need to review the hearings official decision, the staff's memo, and then make your independent decision that, yeah, we agree with where he went with that, and we think it's a valid interpretation of county policy.
I guess my reflection on what you just said is, is that I take all the items on the consent calendar seriously and read them, and decide whether or not I can support them or not, or whether or not they need to be pulled. So I wouldn't want to create a process that makes somebody think that we're a rubber stamp on something and moving it on, because that's not really what the consent calendar does, in my opinion.
Exactly. And that's my only point in raising that, is that it, there is some, I think, terminology used at times, not by the board, but outside of it, that this is simply a almost meaningless step to move this matter on to an appeal to Luba. It is a quicker and easier one than a full hearing by the board, which is the other option currently. But it isn't, as I say, just a rubber stamp. The board hasn't treated it that way, certainly not when it's an actual agenda item that we're talked about. I just don't want the public, frankly, to be confused that that would get any less consideration by the board, simply because it's not done in public session.
Okay. So a follow-up question possibly for Lydia would be, you bring regularly the analysis of fees and recommendations for increases, right? Do you do that yearly? How often are you?
We haven't in the past, though. This year, when we brought one, we said we would like to start doing that, because we actually didn't do one this year. It was 2008, I think, had been the previous one. But our intent is to come more regularly. And frankly, we'll be having a strategic planning discussion with the board in January. You know, maybe that's something that we can talk with the board about, if you do want us to move forward, that we have as part of our strategic discussion with you, which we're going to propose to do annually, that fees could be part of that.
Look to my colleagues. What's, I heard from staff possibly, is bring this back for an additional work session, maybe to hone in more information about a process that uses the consent calendar that might reduce the fees. I think any, and staff time, I think that's important, as we're trying to improve our processes of reducing our staff time, our limited staff time. And then what would that reflect as a potential fee? If we were to go that process, and would the board want to implement a new fee? Or would they want to say, hey, let's analyze it, track the time that's put into it, and then maybe bring it forward in a fee package that, you know, talks about the department as a whole? So do we have some thoughts on guidance here as to how we move forward?
I think the...
Commissioner Bozovic?
Yeah, I think the idea of finding a modified streamlined process and a, somewhere between the 1,500 and the 250 charge rate, sounds like a way to, probably the simplest, easiest way to go, if that's what we can look at, versus trying to get involved in the winner gets a refund stuff is going to really complicate any change to our code or process. But I think if we can get to a consent calendar process that's simple, easy, and lower cost, everybody benefits from that.
So thank you very much for the discussion. Just to be clear, what we'll plan to do, then, staff will come back for a work session with the board. We'll look into getting some more specific fees, what it would cost, and then what procedures, if there would be any manual or code changes, that we would need to implement in order to move that forward. Is that what I'm hearing from the board for the discussion for the work session?
I think so. When I hear you say that a greatly reduced fee, if we were able to do this other process, potentially utilize the consent counter, I'd like to understand what we're talking about. I mean, greatly reduced is more than $200 or something to me. It's maybe we'd get closer to what was originally projected, $600, and, you know, have a discussion as to, kind of keeps our process the way it was intended, limit staff time, and get it to a final decision quicker. I think that that was really what was intended on this, so these things didn't linger along and have to go through a hearing process here at the board, and, you know, charge a large fee, you know, $2,000 to $3,000 to do that, and the burden that that did, and then have to, you know, pay the comparable or more amount when it goes to Luba. I thought that that was the intent of this process. And if it ends up being, you know, this board, through this appeal process, has the ability to say, hey, we think this is county significant, this is a decision significant to county government, and so we have the right to pull it and hear it. And of course, we know that if we do that, that means we're cutting into a reserve somewhere to pay for that hearing process. So was Lydia's recap appropriate for the board to bring us back some other suggestions in the process?
That's fine with me.
Okay. All right. So let's leave it at that, then, and look forward to this probably coming back in the first year sometime.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the discussion.
All right. Thank you. So we're on to item 15, and that's review of assignments.
I have three, Mr. Chair. The first is on item 4B regarding the Tobacco 21 policy discussion. We will draft an ordinance and bring it back to the board in early 2017 for consideration. The second item is, we'll draft a board order with a statement of unity that we have issued publicly last week and bring that to the board. I believe the plan is to do that next week. And then the last item was what you just wrapped up, a work session with additional analysis and options on land management division appeal fees.
We did have a brief report from legal counsel in regards, there was comments this morning from folks, it says that our code wasn't in line with ORSs in regards to animal cruelty, I guess, and animal welfare situations. Is there going to be any additional information provided than what we got from, or expected to be provided, other than what we got from legal counsel?
If you'd, I defer to the board. If you'd like an update, we certainly could schedule an update, I'm thinking, beginning of the year, in January, is when we would do that.
I'm not really concerned, because the question that I stand up to legal counsel that he replied to basically was, you know, we still have access to all the criminal penalties and charges that are in ORS, even though we don't have criminal charges laid out in Lane Code, besides the fact that we only can really put civil charges in there. But it's, you know, we still have the capability of that whole, you know, spectrum of animal cruelty and animal abuse charges that are under ORS available to the prosecutors. If that, if a situation warrants it, I don't know if we need to go through and duplicate ORS necessarily in our code to be able to have that, have the DA have access to those charges. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't leave that hanging if that was an issue.
I do think, as we talked about earlier, based on the public comment and what we're looking at for the 17, 18 budget, that the conversation around resource allocation for animal services in general is certainly an issue that we can talk about, if the board wants to make it a priority in your strategic plan, and direct us to look at options for the budget next year to address any issues, whether that's enforcement-related issues or shelter-related issues for large animals.
Okay. All right. Anything else for review of assignments? There's no executive session. And any other business before the board? Before I adjourn, Commissioner Farr, will you be also attending the HACSA meeting by phone?
I intend to, yes. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm not sure if we're ready, but we do have a HACSA meeting, the conclusion of this meeting, and that is up in the conference room. So with that, the Board of Commissioners meeting is adjourned.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. And I'd like to call the order that HACSA and Community Services and Land Management Board Commissioners meeting. And do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Chair, we said you have two quick adjustments. One, the approval of the minutes was omitted from the agenda, and the minutes were in the packet, so I would request that we approve those. And then the second thing is that Valerie Warner would like to introduce Jeff Brigens, our new finance director to the board. So those would be my two adjustments to the agenda.
I'm with you. Go with Jeff, man. September 27. Second? I just want to make a summary. All the same discussion. Any discussion yet? Discussion. Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
All of those. Sign off. Motion has passed. All right. So, public comment.
Before public comment, could Valerie introduce Jeff?
I'd like to turn it over to Valerie.
Sure. Hi, everyone. After a couple of months of filling in on this position, I feel very fortunate that we were able to locate Jeff Brigens. Jeff started his career, I believe, with Moss Adams, and worked as an auditor, CPA and an auditor, right here in Lane County. And after a while, his career took him to Connecticut, and then to Phoenix. And the drawback to Oregon was family, but I'm really happy that we have also joined him to HACSA. He's going to be a wonderful addition to our senior management team. So Jeff Brigens, our wonderful board.
It's nice to meet you, Valerie.
You brought some business cards, in case you ever have any complex finance questions. Call him.
Go ahead. Sure for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
说明 tax credit finance in the five minutes of us.
All right. Now we'll move on to public comment, and I don't see that, I don't have any.
There is none.
Yeah. All right. So any remarks, friends?
Yeah, I previously submitted my resignation from the Board, Dr. Brinkley. And I want to thank HACSA for letting me in for the last three years, total seven years that I've been on the board. A couple of weeks ago, I turned 70, and I just lost a lot of energy. It's time for me to do other things. I know several really good people who are interested in finance, so they'll carry on. So, and, and you too, please, for your help. lot of energy. It's time for me to do other things. I know several really good people who are interested in finance and will carry on. So thank you, please, for your, for your help.
Hugh, I want to thank you for your participation in the board. When I first began to commissioner, you were on the board, you took a little hiatus and came back. I appreciate the hard work that you put into this. In all the different, various different efforts that you put in, you give 100%. I really appreciate it. And it's not just here, it's all of your other work to help folks in need and really, so I really appreciate being on here and thank you very much for your time.
I just, I'll follow up with that, too. Hugh, thank you very much for your service. Really appreciate it. You know, this has been an opportunity for me to get to know you a little bit and, but I really appreciate it. You're, you're very thoughtful in, in your engagement and your deliberation. And I got to tell you, I actually learned a lot from you. And I just want to say thank you very much. But I'm not an old dog yet, but I'm getting older and, and so I can, I can learn new tricks once in a while. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Not to, to make this go too long, so I'll just say thank you for your time and your service.
I would need to, and appreciate we, we get to discuss and talk about things and your candid comments and whatever. Appreciate it.
He had to step out.
Do you have his number?
Nope.
I probably have his cell phone number because, is he at home?
He's home.
Oh, I don't know if someone...
He's sick.
Probably do. I can try and dial him, but I do have something.
It's not the one he's answering.
Oh, it's not the one he's answering? Okay.
Sorry.
Which one is he answering? He's answering the cell.
Oh, you did the nine. Okay.
All right, one more time.
I just didn't want to put his phone number on recordings.
I'm back. Sorry, a different, a new call came in.
All right. Sorry about that. I hung up on you when you tried dial back.
Okay. I'm hearing very intermittently, but I'd like to say a word to Hugh whenever I'm in the queue.
Commissioner Farr, we just had comments from the board. Hugh, Hugh is, you know, this is his last meeting and we were thanking him for that. I don't know if you want to say anything to Hugh for his service.
Just very briefly, Hugh, I'd like to thank you for your service and remind you that you're one of two great advocates for housing and human services who are retiring at, at the end of this year, you and Mayor Piercy. But like Mayor Piercy, I expect and hope that you're not completely going away. If you'll stay engaged. Thank you, Hugh.
Thank you. And thank you for coming, Harrison.
All right, now we're going to move on. Emergency business. So we're going to go to administration and we'll start with Order 16-11-29-01H in the matter of electing a new member of the Housing Plus Board of Directors. And Jake Fox.
So as you all know, the HACSA board created a nonprofit in 2012, I believe, and due to other priorities, we're keeping that nonprofit relatively inactive. But there are a couple neat things that we're doing under the umbrella of the nonprofit. One is that we're having HACSA employees participate in a reading program for kids in our housing and we're going to launch that effort in early next year. And another really neat thing that we'll do under the umbrella, that nonprofit and Valerie's sort of vision is behind this, and that's to provide some scholarships to residents in our housing. One will focus on higher education and the other one will focus more on vocational training. So we do have an active board and we have a person that's an expert in reading programs for kids. His name is Bill Starbuck. His information is outlined both in the background and then more in depth with bios that actually attach to this memo. So this is asking the HACSA board to add Bill Starbuck as a member of our Housing Plus 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
And Chair, I would move approval of Order 16-11-29-01H. Second?
Is any discussion?
I don't think he's qualified with his resignation.
My goodness.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion has passed. So then we're going to move on to Order 16-11-29-02H in the matter of approving revised terms of contract 16-P-0081 Development Consultant Services for Rehabilitation of Sheldon Village 1, Sheldon Village 2, and Wilkins Townhouses. And that was Steve Fox.
Ohio.
So I'll kind of kick this off and then Steve will talk about just more of the details. But we started doing more proactive asset management of our real estate portfolio and became aware of some pretty serious issues with a number of our buildings. And one of the buildings that has one of the biggest challenges is Sheldon Village 1 and Sheldon Village 2. Last time we were before the board, we were still technically in the legal partnership with our investors. We've since negotiated a very favorable exit from those partnerships. And we're now in a position to, to address the rehab proactively. And we came to the board and asked for approval to hire a development consultant because the, the financial structure of this rehab is different than we've dealt with. So we wanted to bring in an expert. And we've, we want to propose changing the terms and Steve will talk a little bit about what we're proposing in this.
Yeah. And so in essence, once we got into the kind of the nuts and bolts of negotiating this contract, it had been set up so that they would take a certain percentage of the developer fee once it's, which we estimated it being anywhere between $1 million and $1.4 million. And they were, through the RFP process, they proposed taking 13% of that for their services, but most of that would have been upfront, up to 70% upfront before we closed the financing for it, which really took, put all the risk on HACSA. And so in the negotiations, they agreed to taking a bigger amount later, which basically gives us less, less risk going forward. It's only, only 10% of it would happen prior to finance closing. Once finance closing happens and construction happens and then, and then the risks, actually none to HACSA once we're in that realm. So, and they agreed to it. So it's more money overall that they will get, but we thought it was a pretty, pretty wise decision to go that route. So in order to, because the contract amount was going up quite a bit, we would definitely want to come back to you guys and solicit you to get approval for it. So.
Questions?
And Chair, I would move approval of Order 16-11-29-02H in the matter of approving revised terms for contract 16-P-0081. Second?
Any discussion, Sean? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Motion has passed, you know, listen. So we will go on to Order 16-11-29-03H in the matter of approving contract 16-C-0106 for the Riverview Terrace Duckless Project. Steve.
Thank you. So, you know, the, the program that I run is, is a weatherization systems program and, and we're the only ones that are actually tied to a housing authority. And to me, it's a great opportunity to work with my local housing authority because in the past, I ran one of these programs. I had to go find the housing authority. So, and we, the primary goal is to do single-family residences for the residents of low-income residents of Lane County. But I also put into my work plan that we would do one or two multifamilies a year. And I'm trying to get into the HACSA one. So we have, and so this project, so this is the one we'll do this year, is Riverview, which is 60 units, five stories. And it's concrete construction. And as we, as we look at the annual utility bills, you know, it is, our residents are paying upwards of $140 a month in the wintertime to heat a 400-square-foot apartment. And so we have, they're all metered together. They all have the, the panels. It's a relatively simple thing for us to put in ductless heat pumps through it. We have a real favorable bid. And it'll all be paid for our Department of Energy money. So it's kind of a freebie for all of us.
One other question, the comments, I appreciate this is in Cottage Grove. Hopefully be well received by residents in Riverview Terrace production and probably a more efficient, better heating system.
Oh, yeah. More comfortable.
We just happened at Warwick and I tell you, they're, they're amazing. And, you know, we can't really, I couldn't really tell you my savings yet because it's, it's really new, just a couple of months. But I tell you, it heats well. And so I think it's great that we're continuing to put them in.
So now Chair, I would move approval of Order 16-11-29-03H in the matter of approving contract 16-C-0106 for the Riverview Terrace Duckless Project.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All right, same there. All in favor?
Aye.
We lost Pat. We lost Pat, yeah.
Commissioner Farr, I do.
All right, so motion has passed.
Chair, I have to go to a meeting over in Lane County, so I need to check out. Thank you for your time.
All right, so we're going to move on to discussion in the matter of Glenwood Place.
So these next three items are all discussion items. They require no direct action on your part in this meeting. The first one is related to Glenwood Place. And because Glenwood is continuing to define itself and refine itself, we wanted to give an update. And one of the things that HACSA is committed to is supporting the city of Springfield in their efforts to revitalize Glenwood. So we do have a site that we have control of, and Steve will talk a little bit more about those details. And the other thing that related to Glenwood that is of interest to me is that it's geographically located in an area that would be ideal potentially for an administrative building for HACSA. That wouldn't necessarily happen on the site that we control. But I do want the board to know that we're committed to affordable housing in Glenwood and we think it's potentially a good viable site for an administrative building. So Steve will give you a little bit more background on what's going on with our site and the option agreement that we have with the...
Yes, I, and I, I passed out the site plan. I apologize. When we printed, when the packet came out, it got put sideways. So it's only part of the site plan in your packet. So I passed out the, I guess, the latest rendition of our site plan. And yeah, so HACSA's been working since 2012 in, on site in Franklin Boulevard. And we just recently, as of today, extended our current option agreement on the, on the, on the land. It's, it's been a long time now and the, and we're thinking that we're likely not going to see a lot more extensions on our ability to purchase this. What the, what the extension does is it gives us eight more months to finish the environmental review process and get through a waiver process with HUD. If we can get through that, then I think that at that point, we could probably come to the board with a recommendation of whether or not we purchase the property. With that condition on the property right now, without having an environmental review done, we, we wouldn't want to purchase the property at this time. So we're hoping that they'll be able to hold on long enough so we can get through that whole process. And, and what this, the, the new, or the, I guess, the option agreement also does is it reflects that the city of Springfield actually came through with their Franklin Boulevard right of way. And they purchased part of the property, which we knew was going to happen. In the very back of your packet, there's a, we, and I just took it from the website, but it's pretty darn exciting to see the whole McVeigh roundabout design and really what the, what the area is going to look like in the future. And, and, you know, they're, they're well into the, I guess, the designing of that. And over the next few years, hopefully it'll, it'll be built also. So we're thinking the timing of this will work out pretty well also with having new infrastructure in there. And it'll be an exciting, exciting project, I think. The other, the other issue that has come up since it's been so long since we've been, started this process, is that the city of Springfield awarded us home funds back in 2012. And we, we drew on these funds in 2013, $74,000 and some change. And they now need to pay that back to HUD because it's been so long. So they came to us and asked us to pay the money back to them. And so what our, I guess, our, the way we'll approach this was to then probably ask for more CDVG money from them when we, as we move forward here in the next round. And we also have the ability to, when we close on our financing, to get reimbursed for costs. So there is a, there's a good chance we can get reimbursed for those costs from the partnership. It will add to the amount that, overall, that we need to bring in. But, so while it's not ideal paying this back right now, it's also definitely not, not that bad because we do have a few options in order to, to move forward. So, yeah, and so that's, that's basically what's going on. We've had several good meetings with the city of Springfield. Just as far as design goes and timing, there's, if you look at our site plan, just to the north of that's where you heard talk about a parking garage in that area. And so, so when it all comes together, we think this will be a pretty darn exciting project. So, and look forward to being part of the new Glenwood. So.
So, but this project, the way the parcels lay out, is dependent on other parts of Glenwood redevelopment in order to get access to parking, et cetera. Because it doesn't have any direct access onto, onto Franklin and needs the adjacent properties to develop.
That's correct.
So I can see why I'm coming along. It's difficult to make commitments.
And we had talked with them about temporary access from Franklin Boulevard if we were to phase it. But those also get into more expense then because you're creating access you then have to do away with. And so definitely having the other, the other parcels develop that, the east-west road to provide access is the, is going to be the kind of key for that project. So.
And I would just add, we, we were explicitly asked by the city of Springfield to work on the site plan that's in front of you today to maximize the number of units on the site and to depend on their parking structure to meet the needs of our properties. So, Commissioner Bozovich, what you're trying to do is ask for.
Let's, remember this is Bill. This will be affordable housing eligible through Section 8?
Yes, yes.
All of our affordable housing properties have rents set so that they're affordable to people with a Section 8 voucher. So it's pretty common in our affordable housing developments to have between 20 and 40% of the units occupied by people with a 10 base voucher. of the units occupied by people with a 10 base voucher.
So we move on to discussion in the matter of the HACSA governance.
So I just wanted to provide an update on a couple of things related to the future of HACSA governance. So we've been asked to work on a couple of things in partnership with Lane County Administration. The first was the relationship between HACSA and Lane County as it relates to producing meeting agendas, publicizing meeting agendas for the HACSA Board, ensuring that proper public notice has been followed, et cetera. So we've worked with our legal counsel and Ross is here, but we've been working more directly with one of his attorneys, Lauren Summers. And Lauren's been active in these meetings that include Steve Dingle and Greg Rickoff. And what we've accomplished so far, the decisions we've made so far, is that effective January 1st, HACSA will be taking responsibility for all kind of agenda setting and public notice requirements. Those will be actually hosted on HACSA's website starting in January. And the other kind of immediate need that we have, although we don't have to decide today, is that we think it's prudent just to set a monthly HACSA Board meeting. What we experienced, and I think in part what pushed us to have this conversation was over a two-month period of time, we have five meetings because our business needs necessitated that many things going before the Board. And we can absolutely operate with just one monthly Board meeting and just kind of adjust our approach accordingly. The challenge with the Lane County Commissioners because their schedules are, because your schedules are so busy is that we need to find a time. And what Lane County Administration has proposed is that Wednesday afternoons, whether it's 3:00 to 4:30 or 2:30 to 4:00 and whatever the right period of time is, could be, they thought that would be the best candidate for the Lane County Commissioners. So I'm not sure the process the Lane County Commissioners would like to use to kind of pinpoint that date, I could use a little bit of advice on that.
I think, you know, Diana Jones will probably have a pretty good tentative 2017 schedule and it might be great to kind of review the Wednesdays of the month and see if there's one that would, if it could be pinpointed, like the third Wednesday of the month throughout the entire year, if it looks like we're up those weeks, that would, that could be a logical day to do it. That would probably be where I would recommend starting and then if that doesn't work, you might take as many of them and if there was a one week that that Wednesday was wrong, maybe it didn't work, you can move that meeting forward or back a week to meet your needs.
Okay. Yeah, what our goal would be is to just have a monthly HACSA Board meeting on the calendar for all of 2017. I know you all do that regularly for other standing meetings, so. So yeah, so I have your blessing to work with Diana. Looking for that day, do the best way to do it.
And I believe that it's in the bylaws on a certain date, so we might have to look at that.
Yeah, we've already had Lauren look at our bylaws, she, she actually wants to recommend a number of changes, but what we would recommend is that we just make that one change so that the bylaws aren't contradictory to what we've actually scheduled. And then the second part of this discussion is just letting you know that we're, we're looking at different governance models and what we intend to do is prepare a briefing memorandum that would lay out kind of the history of HACSA because it's had a number of sort of big changes over the years. And then it would lay out different governance options that are outlined per HUD regulations and then state revised statutes. And then we would just present that to the Board that lays out, well, we could keep the governance as it is and this is sort of the pros and cons of that. And then it would lay out a couple of different options along with the pros and cons and let the Board deliberate on that. I'm guessing that'll happen in, we're shooting for March or April to have that briefing memo to the Board. So that's, that's my quick overview of that, this discussion.
I don't know, because we're talking about Board Governance, it might be a good time to kind of talk about how we're gonna do things with, in regards to Hugh resigning.
Okay. So when Hugh announced his retirement from the HACSA Board, or resignation from the HACSA Board, we looked at all of our governance documents, that includes our bylaws, the Oregon or Bay statutes and HUD regulations. And normally what we do when we, when a term expires for one of the appointed Commissioners is that we'll send out a flyer to people that are on our Public Housing or Section 8 programs and go through a recruitment, deliberate recruitment process. And both Sharon and Hugh have been through those processes. But because Hugh has one year left on his term, we actually looked at the bylaws and we haven't got a final read on this from the attorney, but one suggestion is that there is a woman that has served on the HACSA Board in the past, she lives in Cottage Grove. And so she's gone through the entire vetting process, so she understands the Board, her name's?
Devanna McKenney.
Devanna McKenney. And we could run a process that would take a few months and get somebody that is unfamiliar with the Board, that would take, you know, three to six months to get up to speed and then have to do it again late next year when the term expires. We thought it may be in. That's weird, right?
The answer is?
Hello?
That's far back.
Okay. That's the strangest ring. All right. So what, so what we thought could make sense, just as a, as an interim, is that we would recommend appointment of Devanna to fill out the remainder of Hugh's term and then we would launch a robust recruitment process for the next Commissioner late this next summer. But it's kind of nice from my perspective because there are a number of bylaws changes. The bylaws aren't very clear about what the process is for recruiting appointed Commissioners, so it'd give us time to develop a good process, modify the bylaws as needed and run a, you know, a robust process that we think will get us a number of qualified candidates, so.
And we want to make sure that we discuss this with the RAB as well, you know, right?
Yeah, so there's the Resident Advisory Board that needs Devanna as part of that Board and that would be a discussion that they would have next Thursday about, just to kind of get their input on this approach.
Sounds like a logical approach. I believe she served since I've been on the Board and I don't remember why she didn't continue, I don't think she was turned out, but irregardless, I think she was a good representative and probably could move right in and do the work needed.
Okay, so we'll then approach the RAB about it, they, they don't have to approve it, but we think it's a respectful thing to discuss with that group. And then it's actually the Lane County Commission that has to approve appointment of the HACSA Commissioners, so then we'll find the next window of opportunity on a BCC agenda and get it before that.
That would just be consent, I believe. You know, it'd be just a consent calendar, but I'm thinking if it isn't till next week, the probably first opportunity is gonna be the first meeting in January, I would assume.
January 10th, hopefully that works.
Madam Chair, if anyone can queue up?
All right, go ahead.
And Jacob, could you slide the mic a little bit closer to the center of the table? I can hear you and Jay pretty clearly, but no one else. Just that the process that Jacob has described seems pre-reasonably, and while it was gonna fill you should, it would certainly give us a position of somebody who has, has experience on the Board.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, so we're gonna move on then to discussion in the matter of property disposition update. Can I have you, Jacob?
I am at Pat.
Great. So I'll kind of introduce this and then Steve can kind of help me and co-present with me, but as the Board knows, we want to market a number of our properties for disposition and sale. And then we want to begin the journey of seeking a new administrative building, whether that's working with a local jurisdiction on surplus buildings that they might have or acquiring a building or potentially building a new building. But we recently completed a RFP process for, for bringing on a real estate broker and Steve can talk in a little more detail about where we are in that process.
Yes, and so we did an RFP process and there's a typo in the, in the memo, it's actually September 26th, September of this year, so it's September 2016. And we got two responses, one from Evan Zelder and Brown and one from Campbell Real Estate, both, both very well, very well-known and respected in Lane County. And after going through the valuation committee, decided to go Evan Zelder-Brown. And yeah, and so I guess kind of the next steps then with them would be to, that they would come up with marketing proposals and, and kind of price options for each of our parcels after doing some due diligence and, and then what we'll need to do is come back to the Board with resolutions in order to actually authorize Jacob and Valerie to, to sell the properties, so. And we expect to do that probably beginning, right at the beginning of the year. The real estate market's really hot right now, so as far as the, especially the multifamily residential, it's a, it's a good time to be selling for, on those properties. And yeah, and then, and I guess with that, or simultaneously, we'll be starting the process of looking for a new administrative building and looking at possible options there, so.
And.
HACSA Plan.
Yep. So we're gonna move on then to Executive Session. And the HACSA Board will meet in Executive Session to consult with Council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigations or litigation likely to be filed. This Executive Session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602-H, which allows the HACSA Board to meet in Executive Session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the Executive Session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed to not report on any of the deliberations during the Executive Session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in Executive Session. We reserve the right to come back out into public session should the need arise. We reserve the right to come back out into public session should the need arise.